Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors this Monday, November 24th, 2025. The first item on our agenda is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711, one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, Economic Development Commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fritzekowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky.
Aye.
Chair DeMott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed meeting. Okay, is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, roll on the motion and second to come out of closed meeting. Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and now we will certify the closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by our county administrator, Angie Hill.
Please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and then join me as I lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing on the Agricultural and Forestral District AFD VI renewal, and we have a presentation from Bree Hopkins. Welcome, Bree. Turn your mic on, please. Thanks.
It's normally on when I get here. We only do these every eight years per district, so it's actually been a couple of years since you all have seen one of the AFDs come forward. This is for the Shalsville area. You can tell it's the star right here, so it's located in the eastern portion of the county. AFDs, their purpose is to basically conserve and protect our agricultural and forestal lands. Owners do this on a voluntary basis, and basically they agree to not develop their property for a period of eight-year terms. There are some very clear restrictions on what they would have to do to pull out before the eight years is up, and all of our county citizens benefit from the good stewardship because it does leave us with guaranteed open properties, open forestal and agricultural property. So there are some review criterias when we review these districts. Each district shall have a core, no less than 200 acres. Parcels can be included in a district if they meet certain criteria, such as being within one mile of the boundary, being contiguous, or if we find that it is an agriculture or forestly significant property. The State Code of Virginia is clear that the local government may continue, modify, or terminate any district when it's brought forward at its eight-year renewal, and you can also stipulate conditions if you decide to continue the district. So these are the uses that are compatible with AFDs. As you can see, most of that's limited to agriculture, residential dwellings. We do allow telecommunications towers in our AFDs, data polls, and exploratory activities. So now to get into specifics of AFD VI. This Agriculture/Forestal District was originally formed in 1981. It's comprised of 1,658 acres with six landowners. There are not any proposed changes to this district, so we had a 100% response rate and everyone renewed. You can see this consists of an area here. This is considered the core because it is the largest, although this is 400 and some acres, so it could serve as a core on its own. It is within that .87 miles, so that's under the mile that we allow for an outlier parcel is basically what that's considered to be included. At this time, there were no requested additions or withdrawals. It's just a simple, basic renewal. And the AFD Committee met on September 25th, followed by the Planning Commission on November 19th. Both unanimously recommended approval of the renewal for the AFD VI south of Shalsville. And with that, it was short and brief, but I will take any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Bree before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you very much for bringing that forward for us this evening, and we will go ahead and start the public hearing. We did have a sign-up sheet in the lobby prior to the meeting for the AFD number VI renewal. We did not have anybody sign up, but if anybody is here this evening that would like to speak to this subject, please come forward at this time. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move to public address. We also had a sign-up sheet for public address in the lobby prior to the meeting, and we did have people sign up in advance and in the lobby. So our public address this evening is going to start with a presentation, and the first name that I have, I hope we've got this correct, it's Carolah Haas, and then following, and then it will be Anna Vajean, and then Lindsey Fox. And I understand that all three of you guys are going to be speaking to different parts of this presentation.
That's correct.
Perfect. Okay, so everybody will have four minutes, and when the light turns yellow, it means you have one minute left. Welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Carolah Haas, and I live in Reiner, and we are, as a group, going to give this presentation because of our concern about possible inequities in funding for school and county functions. So our goal was to provide an accurate accounting of how funding between the schools and the counties increased between FY 2020 and FY 2026, including capital funding and debt service. And so currently, we're in FY 2026, and again, we wanted to look over a time period and see if both school and county funding has increased equitably. And our major finding was that over the past six years, county funding grew at nearly twice the rate of school funding. So at the end of the presentation, there's a lot of slides with details of the methods that you can go over on your own, but just briefly to explain how we came to these conclusions, what we did is we looked at the components of the budget for the school funding and the county funding separately. So we looked at school debt service, the school capital fund, the school nutrition fund, and the school operating fund, excluding funds that were transferred to the debt service. And then on the county side, we looked at county debt service, the county capital fund, the economic development incentives, the law library, and the general government portion of the general fund. And again, we were comparing values currently back to FY 2020, as that was the last budget approved before the COVID-19 pandemic, so we're thinking of it as a sort of normal year several budget cycles back. And in order to compare these different numbers over time, we want to correct for three things. So we know that the enrollment of MCPS has decreased by several hundred students over that six-year period. We know that the population of the county has increased by several thousand people over that time period, and of course, you know, we've been in an inflationary cycle, so a dollar in 2020 is not the same as a dollar today. So we did correct for decrease in school enrollment and increasing county population by dividing the per capita expenses in each, and corrected both for inflation. And so then when we do that, correcting the school budget for the number of students, correcting the county budget for the number of residents, and correcting both for inflation, what we find is that over that six-year period, the school budget has increased by 7.9%, while the county budget has increased 14.1%. And so again, over the past six years, that's showing that county funding has grown at nearly twice the rate of school funding. So we wanted to break that down into the components so you could see where the increases and decreases were happening. In both cases, debt service has decreased over that time period. The school capital fund has increased 23%, while the county capital fund has increased 11%. And then the school nutrition fund has increased 9.8%. And for the economic development incentives and the law library, those dollar amounts have stayed constant, so it seems like that's a certain, a set number of dollars that you all pay each year, and that has not changed between 2020 and 2026. But because the county population has increased in that time per capita, the amount that we're spending has gone down, and because inflation has increased over time, then, you know, in real dollars, that commitment has gone down. So I think I am at my, close to my four minutes, and we'll let our next speaker come up.
Okay.
Oh, just advanced the, with the arrows there.
All right, next we have Anna Vajean. If you'll start just by stating your name and where in the county you reside.
Yes, I'm Anna Vajean, and I live in District A. And the only big budget categories remaining for schools and for the county are the school operating fund and the general government portion of the county's general fund, which of course covers operational expenses for the county. So again, after accounting for declining student enrollment and inflation, the school operating fund grew 10.3% over the last six years, and the county's operating expenses, you can see, grew by 18.2%. One question we had was how much of this discrepancy in growth is due to the large increase in funding for emergency services? Who, did I? Yeah, okay, so here you can see that we separated out emergency services from the rest of the county's operating expenses, and you can see that funding for volunteer fire and rescue agencies and fire and EMS departments together grew by 226%. And the rest of the county's operating expenses there on the bottom grew by 11.1%. Now, on the face of it, the 10.3% for the school operating fund and 11.1% for the county's operating expenses looks pretty close, but if we crunch the numbers, we find that if the school operating fund had grown by 11.1%, the same as the county's operating expenses, instead of by 10.3%, the school operating fund would have gained an additional $1.1 million over the last six years, and of course, that's enough to pay for free lunch for all our students. In the next few slides, we're going to take a quick look at some of the individual budget areas within the county's general government spending and the school operating fund. And I want to quickly mention that since free breakfast was a new budget item within the school operating fund this year, it doesn't appear in this listing, even though it is, it was appropriated as part of the school operating fund. So on the top there, well, after the emergency services at 226% growth, you can see judicial administration and the animal care and adoption center each grew by over 26% over the past six years after accounting for, of course, county population and inflation. County IT and school administration and health and psychological services grew by 21 to 22%. County administration financed the county attorney and the Board of Supervisors together grew by about 18%. County general services grew by about 17%. School operations and maintenance, the sheriff's office, school transportation and community development each grew by about 12 to 13%. And school instruction grew by only about 8.8%. And we're going to talk more about the implications of this relatively smaller growth rate for school instruction in a couple of slides, but just quickly, there were some budget items that grew by even less, about 2% or less, and this is after accounting for enrollment or population trends and inflation. I don't know enough about these budget categories, but it might be something to look at, that these have grown at such a small rate in, because sort of real dollars per resident.
Okay, thank you. And then the next person that we have is Lindsey Fox. Welcome.
Lindsey Fox, I'm District A from Blacksburg, and I'll take you through the rest of the slides. So back to what, what does school instruction cover? It covers things like classroom instruction and homebound instruction, media services or our school libraries, improvement of instruction, technology, instructional support, office of the principal, principals, assistant principals, guidance services, and social worker services. So for that area that did not increase by very much, it does cover quite a bit. Observation, funding for instruction, funding for school instruction grew by 8.8%. As we said before, most major budget categories grew by at least 12.1%. If school instruction had also grown by 12.1%, it would have gained an additional 3.5 million. We separated out school and county capital funding and debt relief and accounted for decreasing school enrollment, increasing county population, and inflation. The data show that over the past six years, county funding grew at nearly twice the rate of school funding. The difference in growth of school and county funding was largely accounted for by major increases for volunteer fire and rescue agencies and fire and EMS departments. However, even after excluding fire and rescue and fire and EMS, the general government portion of the general fund grew by 11.1%, while the school operating fund grew by 10.3%. If the school operating fund had grown by 11.1%, it would have gained an additional $1.1 million, enough to pay for free lunch for all students. Funding for instruction grew by 8.8%. If funding for instruction had grown at the rate of most other major budget areas, 12.1%, it would have gained an additional 3.5 million, enough for major new initiatives and instruction. And methods are going to be explained in detail in the rest of these slides that you can go through, but thank you. I don't know how to turn it off. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I know Vicky has those slides and can make sure they're made available to all members of the Board. Thank you. Okay, we did have several other people sign up for public address, so I'm going to go ahead and call the next two names on the list so the person on deck is ready. Next up, we have Linda Majors, and following Ms. Majors, we have Andrew Schinkert. I apologize if I got that incorrect. Welcome.
I'm Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, District A, and I am here as chair of PMCVA, Preserve of Montgomery County VA, to present to you a petition with 75 names on it from people in eastern Montgomery County that would like the county to become an intervenor in CP 162614 and ask for another 30 days to comment and become interveners. The present time is 21 days. That's all that the citizens were given to understand, and right now, they're having, they are not here. I am here for them because they are at Meadowbrook Library right now, standing room only, about 60 people trying to understand this MVP boost project and what it means for their community. So I also want to mention a couple of things. We heard the last Board of Supervisors meeting that Supervisor Fidzikowski was talking about his visit to a compressor station a couple hours away, MVP one, which we considered probably was the Stallworth Compressor Station, which right now is at 41,000 horsepower. The one that will be proposed for eastern Montgomery County is 136,900, three times bigger than that one that he saw. And that's a consideration because we live on a radioactive planet, and this fracked gas comes from the Marcella shale, and out of that Marcella shale is a lot of radioactivity as well as fracking fluids. And when there's blowdowns, then the toxins from the fracking fluid and the radioactivity get spewed out into the community. So not only noise and traffic and everything else, but there are health effects. I think that those I think that those considerations and that this shouldn't be a big deal for the county to do a dockless intervention because obviously you represent the citizens and you can easily ask for at least 30 days. That's, you know, what I would consider a very minimum amount to ask for. I'm going to give the original petitions to Vicky, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Andrew Schinkert. And then following him, we have Kim Bowman. Welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm Andrew Schinkert. I live in B, and I farm in F and B. I'm here this evening to ask you to consider approving a new agricultural land use ordinance. In 1974, Virginia passed legislation to enable localities to provide tax relief to landowners in order to preserve agricultural lands for the public benefit. Currently, county rules require a five-acre minimum for ag land to be assessed at its use value rather than market value. Virginia Code 58.1-3233, number two, states that an exemption to the five-acre minimum is allowed for purposes of raising specialty crops if prescribed by local ordinance. Specialty crops is clearly defined by the USDA. I'm asking you to approve an ordinance allowing the exception to the five-acre rule. Five acres is not necessary for a successful fresh market vegetable business. My wife and I have been growing on less than five acres here in the county, supplying local farmers markets, grocery stores, and food banks from 1991 straight through COVID and continuing to today. We were denied the ag land use assessment because this county has not approved an ordinance for the five-acre exception stated in the Virginia Code. Finally, Commissioner Winkle, quote, "does not wish to input her opinion on the matter for the time being." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Kim Bowman. And then the last name that we had on the list in the lobby was Kelly Brennan. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kim Bowman. I live in Christiansburg. And I have two things I wanted to mention tonight. First of all, I do want to ask you not to approve the five-time enlargement of the construction landfill that is located in the county, but also affects 84 people that live in Christiansburg off of Rainbow and Village Lane, where I understand on some days, there will be more than 100 additional visits in and out of that neighborhood to dump. And I actually went and knocked this neighborhood. I don't know if any of you guys did that this past week, but I did, okay? And I was pretty shocked to find out from one of our police officers that lives right next door. Kind of a strange situation. There's a townhome there at the end of the property, and one townhome's in the county and the others in the town. But the gentleman told me that not only are the trucks coming in and out with the pollution, but they're there sometimes as late as 1:30 in the morning, covering stuff up and making noise and keeping the whole neighborhood awake. That's not the norm. The norm's more like 10 or 10:30 at night. But you can imagine, if you live next door and you had a full line construction going with moving and covering garbage all times of the night. I did see some children walking up and down. One lady strolling a child with pets, and there's no room on that street. It's very narrow. And also, I understand that there was a core test done on that road. Well, I kind of did one myself with my camera. I think you guys received some pictures. I wouldn't drive anything across that and expect it to hold up. I'm not sure how it's going to hold up with all this additional construction, or who's going to send Christiansburg taxpayers money to pay for the reconstruction of the roads we're tearing up. But I really hope that you will consider everybody involved and say no to that project. Also, the other thing I wanted to mention was the, I am opposed to the reassessment of real estate tax every two years. I do simple math, and that's just a money grab, in my opinion. We're fine with every four years. And I know that people need to brace for that impact every four years, but if you're getting half of it now and then the other half later, they're actually paying a time and a half in my math. So please say no to that. People are hurting. I'm not sure when everybody is going to catch on to that, but again, I will express my time as a nonprofit builder in this community. You know, the Agape Center's feeding 2,000 people a month. That's one place in this county. You guys need to open your eyes and take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. And then after Mr. Brennan speaks, if anybody else would like to come forward, we'll have time for that. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Brennan, and I live in Reiner. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Bone for her eight years of service on this board. I've appreciated your willingness to ask lots of questions in order to gain clarity and to help in understanding, and it's certainly helped me out a lot in my understanding of processes. And I've also appreciated your willingness to challenge your own thinking and the thinking of other members of this board. You've provided a perspective that often looks outside the box, and that, I think, is a very valuable trait for any deliberative board. And finally, you have been attentive to the concerns of people who have stood at this podium, and I think that's a very important thing. So I wish you all success in your current and future endeavors, and thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Ms. Hopkins and the entire planning staff and the interns who've worked long and hard for many, many months guiding us through revision of our comprehensive plan. Last Monday's open house reflected this work and provided yet another opportunity to voice opinions and ask questions. They've done and continue to do outstanding work. At your last meeting, November 12th, several of you reported on your experiences at the VACO conference. Your individual and collective enthusiasm for the various sessions you attended was encouraging. I'm especially intrigued by the report of Ms. DeMottz on the energy and food security sessions she attended. Mr. Fidzikowski has also pointed out that we need to be attending to the issue of data centers as a proposal is very likely to land in our laps sooner than later. These three topics fold directly into the comprehensive planning process, and it is my hope that these topics will be explored in county-sponsored forums so that all citizens can learn about and engage with these very critical issues. And I'm very pleased that you all have included in your legislative priorities for 2026 opposition to legislation that would reduce local control when considering data centers as well as opposition to legislation that would fast-track the siting of energy facilities. From my perspective, the negatives associated with data centers far outweigh any positives. Indeed, the only positive is that data centers can and do provide substantial tax revenues to local jurisdictions. However, the environmental, social, and economic costs are quite substantial and, to my sensibilities, are not worth any amount of additional tax revenue. As you know, data centers are hugely energy-intensive and here in Virginia are already causing electrical supply issues and increasing consumer costs. Additionally, data centers use massive amounts of clean water for cooling, which strains surface and groundwater, is likely affecting a whole lot of different things. These combined demands are already pushing utilities towards building more power plants, pipelines, and transmission lines, and localities towards developing more infrastructure. For me, opposition to data centers is a no-brainer. Common sense implores us to be responsible stewards of the land and resources we depend upon. I urge this board to pass a resolution opposing data centers and to adopt an ordinance or ordinances that prohibit their siting in Montgomery County. And I'd also encourage you to work with our neighbors to do the same thing in order to be focused on long-term health and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the end of our list. If anybody else would like to come forward. And Mr. Neal, I'm actually, when your item is up, we're going to have you come forward as part of that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is David Van Hooser. I actually live here in Christiansburg. I own land in Wilson Run subdivision in Southfield Magisterial District. I've got an issue with a zoning issue. They've got four horses down there on the property on G, Track G, G1. Actually, Ralph Martin bought it or had it in 2005, sectioned it off. When the land was developed or the Wilson Run subdivision was there, every plot was over five acres to allow, I guess, four horses or whatnot. When that section got split off, the one land was 1.43 acres and the other property was 4.25. So neither one is five acres allowing for the use of horses, of ponies. But Planning Commission allowed them to put a gate in between the properties, and now there's four horses down there. I did have them go out there Wednesday, Deputy Powers and, no, they went Thursday, Deputy Powers and Lauren Rogers. And they said they did document four horses out there, didn't know when they would be able to get back out to do whatever they do to get rid of them. I just, I understand that would be two of them, but they shouldn't be, the other two shouldn't be there to start with. I don't understand how come that was, Planning Commission did that without allowing the landowners there to, you know, to voice their opinions. That's where I'm at.
I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind to share your name and phone number with our clerk, just so if needed, we can reach back out to you. Thank you, sir.
I've got some papers here. I'd like to see them, too.
You could also leave those with the clerk, and she'll make sure that all of us see them as well, if you're comfortable with that.
Well, if I can get copies back.
Would anybody else like to come forward and address the board on any topic during public address? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lee Hawthorne. I live right here in Christiansburg on Village Lane. I've taken a look at the website, the Montgomery County website, and there's a lot of really good information there. I may be doing my math wrong, but it seems to me that if an increase of that size for the dump site goes into effect, where I live now for seven years, might be bypassed by these trucks, as many as 100 a day for the next 40 years. Could that possibly be right? That'd probably be my entire tenure of living here. In that neighborhood, aside from how it'd affect me personally, there's a lot of subsidized housing nearby. These people don't necessarily have cars. A lot of them walk to get their groceries. It's a good, it's a good little community, and you see a lot of strollers, a lot of kids bombing hills on dirt bikes and stuff like that. There's no sidewalks. I don't have a whole lot to say, but I think you get my demeanor. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to address the board? Okay, seeing nobody else come forward, we're going to close public address. We do not have an addendum this evening, so we'll move to consent agenda. Is there a motion on our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Graffski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Chair DeMottz?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. And now we do have one item of old business. This is, there's actually, excuse me, two items of old business. They're connected. There's a special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC for a rubble landfill and a special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC for a contractor's storage yard. We do have a presentation, and then we'll have the applicant come up as well. Welcome.
Thank you. So after your last meeting, you all had some questions for the applicant and the owner. We forwarded those and have received their response. So to reorient everyone, this is located right outside the town of Christiansburg. You can see it here. This is the 460 bypass going towards Christiansburg, and then this is Interstate 81 here. This is an aerial view of the property. The blue line here denotes where the town of Christiansburg limit is, and then this is the property here. So one of the questions we had, and I believe there's five or six, we asked for a detailed closure plan, and the response from the engineer firm was, upon completion of filling the site, the final grades will be covered with a minimum of six inches of topsoil and stabilized with permanent seating to the satisfactory of the engineer. The site would then be returned to agricultural pasture. For view shed analysis, they did give us an exhibit illustrating some street views of the site from Route 460 bypass. The maximum grade of any fill slopes would be three to one, and that is considered a mowable slope. Additionally, they are proposing a six-foot tall berm that would also meet that three-to-one side slope requirement and have some buffered plantings as required by the zoning ordinance on the top and the face of the berm facing 460. So this is that illustration here. You can see the buffer is this darker green area. These letters denote the pictures at the bottom, so you can see what that visual is. This is the berm and then how they would plant it. This is hard to read because it's kind of small on your screen, but this is just a copy out of our ordinance of a type four buffer area. That type four buffer also requires an opaque fence, but what we do in lieu of that a lot of times is require some evergreen trees. So when we review the conditions, you'll see how we've written that in as a proposed condition if you decide to move forward with approval. Structures within fill area, this was noted. Originally, it was stated that the structures would not be in a fill area, but they were shown that way on the plan. So the applicant has now come back and said they may actually be in some of the fill areas, but that they would meet any building official requirements for geotechnical analysis or compaction studies at that time. So they are aware of the building requirements and would submit those compaction or geotechnical analysis to the building official when they applied for those permits. Again, this is the overall plan. The only update to this plan really was the date, and then I believe they called out some of that buffer area there. Public utilities verification from the town of Christiansburg. They did submit an email from the town of Christiansburg that stated public water and sewer were available at the edge of the property and would be extended to it if requested. Post-fill elevations, so they did attach an exhibit. It is very hard to see on the screen with the topography that has one possible example of the grades. It is subject to change, and so they wanted to note that based on engineer, they haven't done full engineering of the site, so that grade may not be the final grade. It's just an estimate of what it could look like, and it would still meet that three-to-one. So this is the plan. You can see the topo here. This does show a three-to-one slope. It is still rather steep. There is the existing house here, and so basically to the top, it would be 120-foot difference in height once it's filled, but it would be even with the elevation that you see up here at the top. For a dust control plan, Black Diamond will work with Montgomery County ES inspectors And then for slight drainage verification, we just asked for acknowledgement that the fill placed throughout the life of this facility will drain from the regulated areas to the stormwater management facilities, and that's upon closure as well. They did acknowledge that and stated that they understood that bonding would be required to ensure that and that the site plan would include phasing for the project, so we could evaluate that. So as a reminder, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 11th. One citizen spoke with concerns. They deferred that and, and took it up at a later meeting, and then they recommended approval of seven to O with conditions. Now, the conditions highlighted in yellow have been changed since we received additional applica-, additional application information following your board meeting. So the development should be in general conformance with the inert field site plan pages one through five. That's general conformance, so that would not hold them to that exact slope. But basically, it does depict that there won't be like mounds of dirt that are left throughout the property, that it would be an even three-to-one mowable slope. We did change the date for the updated plan. And then we added the condition that a six-foot tall berm with three-to-one side slope shall be constructed along the property line adjacent to 460. In addition to the type four buffer, evergreen trees shall be planted on the top and face of the berm in lieu of the opaque fencing. So the fencing probably would not do as much benefit as the evergreen trees would. So, so we felt that that was a better, better look for the 460 corridor. Those evergreens shall be six feet tall at the time of planting and staggered six feet on center. And then we did add a condition that the maximum grade of any fill slope shall be three-to-one. Contractor's storage yard, not much changed here. I just included the visuals so you could see. These are the future buildings with the parking areas. And then the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this as well. It was deferred at the same time as the rubble landfill because the applicant wanted to keep those two items together, so they didn't want to, to split them up. Joining owners were notified. And with that, I will take any questions from you. We did also add the, and it did not make it here. We did also add the condition regarding the berm to the contractor's storage yard resolution if you choose to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have questions for staff? I'm going to start Supervisor Kits with you because I believe this is in your district.
So remind me what the usage in the, for the comp plan that we have now. I know we're updating everything, but what's the usage for that area now?
So currently, this is designated as an urban expansion area like most of the areas surrounding the towns.
Okay, so does the usage, because I know it's an, it's, remind me again, it's the, the usage for this is because it's an individual owner and site, not for expanded commercial for that much? Help me understand that one.
So it's, it's designated as urban expansion, which is one of the areas we designate for growth. This site is currently zoned agriculture A1, which is why they're applying for the SUP. But this is an area designated for future growth.
Can you explain how they can use it now?
Yes. So right now, zoned agriculture, farming, single-family dwellings, they could probably do some minor subdivision. They are eligible for rezonings to a denser development or some type of commercial development as long as they meet the conditions for the rezoning, meaning they have access to public water and sewer. They would have to have access to public roads. For this to be developed, they would probably have to install a public road on the property. But if they met all those conditions, then it would, it would meet the requirements for consideration to rezoning.
And they can use it for rubble landfill by right for a smaller area?
For a smaller area, which my understanding is they are close to or have already met.
Okay, so the usage that's requested to be rezoned to now is an exception to what we'd like to do with it for the future at this point?
It is probably not what we envisioned for this property when we did the comprehensive plan in 2004.
Okay. And so the usage, usage right now is by right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Supervisor Ben?
Can you go to the slide, the topographic slide, please?
Absolutely.
So you, in your description, you said that something would be even at the top.
Correct. So basically, these elevations here are even with the elevations back here. And then it'll slope at a three-to-one slope.
Okay, so this is where they're filling right now, is that correct?
They are filling right here. You can see the fill area here.
And if I were to guess, let's say 11, 11 o'clock is a ridge. You know, this is finished and there would be a ridge, kind of, at 11 o'clock, is that correct?
Yes, because this slopes down here, so this would create like a little valley.
Yep. And the pictures that were shown were, didn't show this section. You cannot see the rubble landfill now.
Correct.
It did show this other parcel down to, at nine o'clock, right there, right?
Correct.
And there's not going to be any rubble landfill there?
Yes, there is. That is phase one of the rubble landfill.
And there are no pictures from halfway down or at the top of the last little ridge of 460 going towards 81. It's just at the bottom.
Right.
Right? Okay. When they're done, it didn't sound like anything could be built on this. It could just be farmland, is that correct?
Anything that is built on this would have to have a compaction test or a geotechnical analysis that would meet the building code requirements before they could build anything on this.
And so what is it? If, if, if they finish and create this as they propose and someone wanted to buy the property from them and build homes on it, or maybe they wanted to, would, would it be cost prohibitive to make it compact enough?
I, they would probably, my understanding is if you're doing compaction, you have to do that as you go. I'm not sure how the geotechnical analysis works. I just know that all that has to be turned in to the building official to ensure that there's not shifting foundations or, or anything like that. I am not aware of locations that we have had larger developments or multi, you know, multi-homes built on fill sites. Normally, once they complete the fill, they reclaim the site and, and it kind of stays as it is.
And there's no topographic map like this for the, the first phase?
There, no, there is not. Do they, you can see it kind of cut off over here.
Right. And that's, the topographic lines are just the way that it is today. It's not finished product.
I, I'm assuming so.
Yes. That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor King, no questions? Supervisor Biggs?
No questions, but I do want to state that I did go to the project site and went through the neighborhood and everything and viewed it. I have a lot of concerns about trucks going through there. And I did see the watch the children sign. I mean, that's a neighborhood. It's eclectic because it has businesses also, but there are a lot of homes there. And that really concerns me about the amount of traffic that would be going through there. That's all I have to say.
Supervisor Grafski, any questions for staff?
I just want to make sure, this is just, this is one parcel, right? This whole property is one parcel. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Fitchikowski? Okay, I don't have any questions at this time either, but I know Mr. Neal might have some information to present as well.
Thank you for your time tonight. John Neal, Forsight Design Services, 1260 Radford Street, Christiansburg. First, I guess, happy to answer any questions you have, but I want to point out a couple of things or reiterate a couple of things. Your Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval on both of these items. We spent a substantial amount of time talking with the Planning Commission about the traffic, the road. We took an actual machine out and took three core samples along Village Lane, went through all the calculations and stuff. And all of that was met with satisfaction of both VDOT and the town of Christiansburg for the roads. I don't think there's any concern there whatsoever. Happy to address any concerns you all have about that. Number two, the site has been operating as a fill site for a really long time. And that has happened without time limits. This SUP specifically puts time limits on the site. So I don't think that should be a concern at all as far as the timing of the site is concerned. The three-to-one slope that we are limited to by your county engineering staff, by the site plan that we will do, three-to-one is considered a mowable slope. So in other words, you can walk on that slope, walk up and down it, you can mow it, those types of things. It is not what I think you probably possibly have in your mind of something that is, you know, you can't get goats up and things like that. Three, three-to-one, you know, this is three feet, it's about like this, you know, roughly, something like that, right? One foot is that tall.
Come back to the mic.
Just, for example, I'll speak up.
Well, we can't get you on the audio for the live stream. Sorry.
So three foot is about this wide, right? One foot is that tall. That's that slope. That we are limited to by the engineering, by the county engineering staff. Just wanted to point that out. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, great. Now, questions for Mr. Neal? Do we have any? Nobody's making eye contact with me. I don't think anybody has any questions. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, this is in two parts. The first item is a special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC rubble landfill. Is there a motion? Marty, I don't know what to do when there is no motion. This has not occurred while I've been chair.
I guess we could ask if there's a motion for approval. If there isn't, then is there a motion for denial? I guess you could ask for that.
Okay.
I don't know.
Is there a motion for approval of the special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC rubble landfill? Is there a motion for denial of the special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC rubble landfill?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion to deny the special use permit for the rubble landfill?
I, can I make a comment?
Sure, of course.
I think the proposal is great. I think the location is not good. I think that if it came back in parcels, meaning expanding where they are so there's no view from 460 at any point, I think that would help me, but I'm not going to be here in the future. Among other things, the line of questioning that I had. So I also do have some concern about Ms. Bowen's comments about noise past 5:00 PM. That's horrible. So it'd be great to get clarification about that before it's, any portion of that is voted on in the future. Thank you.
Supervisor Kits?
So this is my district, and I've been out there. And I've walked the area and I know what we're talking about. And I went to Christiansburg and I talked to them about it and let them know about it. I don't have a problem with the process of, of, we know we need something like this, but the positioning of it in the neighborhood of where it's at, in the area along 460 and along the back where we've listed it for expansion, is not the right spot. And I have a, a big problem with that, especially around houses and everything else. Completely understand it, the current usage, but I also understand that it's almost at its max capacity for the usage that it has right now. And that's my concern moving forward, but again, not against so much the business, but the location is a big problem for me, especially positioned where it is. And I've heard from a lot of people that they are not happy with that. And again, sat down with, with Christiansburg, had a chance to talk to a couple of them, and they expressed their displeasure because it's right on the line between Christiansburg and the county. It's right there in a gray area. So I'm carrying their concerns too. So that's all, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Supervisor Biggs?
As stated earlier, my concern, traffic and safety going through neighborhoods with the, the truck traffic. I wish there was another way to access that piece of property because I, I agree with Supervisor Kits. We do need something like that, but it's just, it's to get there and go through that neighborhood just to me, just didn't make any sense as far as safety and traffic.
Vice Chair Fitchikowski?
Yeah, I would just add to what Supervisor Biggs said and Supervisor Kits. I think there's a need for something like this in this end of the county. But, and I don't have a problem with the view shed. I don't have a problem with the condition of the road getting in there. But I, I do have concerns about going through a neighborhood with large trucks to, and especially when, nobody can really be sure of how many trucks per day it would be. I'm sure there'd be some days that weren't very busy, but other days that would just be, just too much traffic. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Ben?
I do want to thank the, the Black Diamond and Forsight for making the modifications that they did do. That was helpful. It just certainly wasn't enough for me, but that's the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, so I am seeing no further discussion and a reminder that this is a motion for denial of the special use permit for the rubble landfill. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Biggs?
Yes.
Mr. Grafski?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchikowski?
Aye.
Chair DeMott?
Aye.
Seven votes to deny.
Okay, the next item of old business is a special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC for the contractor's storage yard. Is there a motion? Okay, is there a motion to deny?
I got, I got a question on this before we, and I apologize for waiting a second. I had to get my thoughts straight.
We're not in discussion yet.
So, oh, yes, sorry, I'll be quiet.
So do you want to make a motion to approve or deny?
Moved.
To deny? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now to your question.
Sorry. My question was if it's not approved, because they don't have the land yet to put it because it has to be compacted before it can be built. Is that the way I'm understanding it? Maybe that's a re-question?
Mr. Neal? That might be the best question for him.
So I'm, I'm not quite sure I follow your question. The contractor's storage yard can completely be separate from the fill site?
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, just, the only thing is, is where you put it, I understood there still had to be some fill put in, or it was going to be built on fill, or?
Well, there, you would level up the land to put the building on, but that would be incidental. It, it wouldn't be for a fill site. It would be fill for the, for the building.
Yeah, okay.
In the parking lot.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything else. Trying to think of it.
Okay.
So if someone
So if someone, if the right thing is for us to approve it, I'm willing to rescind my motion. But, we can have whatever discussion we want, and I'm certainly okay with how I made the motion.
Okay, so right now we have a motion to deny and an offer to rescind the motion. Does anybody have any feedback on that? Because in order to remove the motion, we'd also have to remove the second.
I'll remove mine in order to discuss, because I want to hear what other people have to say. So, I'll remove it, because the storage yard is completely separate from the fill, and I don't have as much a problem with the storage as I do with the traffic and the fill and everything else, so.
Okay, so now we're back to motionless. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the special use permit for Black Diamond Resources LLC for a contractor's storage yard?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion on this topic? Okay, Supervisor Grafsky?
This part of the project, I was much more comfortable with. It doesn't, yeah, there's going to be some traffic as vehicles come in and out, but not, at least I did not get the impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that there would be near the amount of traffic that the dump trucks coming to the fill site would generate.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion now to approve the special use permit for a contractor's storage yard. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes to approve.
Okay. Moving to new business. The first item of new business is the ordinance for the AFD number six renewal that we had the public hearing on earlier today. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item of new business is the ordinance related to the county's stormwater management program. We did have a presentation on this topic in a very recent work session, but we do have staff here. If anybody has any follow-up questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or follow-up questions needed? Supervisor Grafsky?
A point of clarification. So the school board requests, you know, $1,040,000 of unanticipated revenues.
I think you're on the next item.
Oh, my, oh, sorry. I'm looking at the screen, and what's in, right in front of me?
Never mind.
We'll go to that. Put a pin in it. We'll come to you next. Okay, any questions related to the stormwater management program? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next. MCPS supplemental appropriation for the school operating fund. This is for supplemental appropriation of $1,040,000 of unanticipated revenues related to S R funds. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Did you get that, Vicki? Okay. And now, to your question. Supervisor Grafsky?
Thank you, and I apologize, jumping the gun there. So, you know, requesting appropriation of unanticipated revenues, but then, you know, the last sentence in this kind of summary is that, you know, this is a reimbursement. So, I presume this is money that was requested. It's just because of the order that things come in is why it's unanticipated, or?
Take it away, Angie.
I read that, and I'm not exactly sure why we said it was unanticipated, because they did request the reimbursement at the end of June.
Okay.
It is, so these expenditures were covered in their 2025 budget, and now they're getting reimbursed for those funds.
And it does not change my thoughts on giving the money back to the schools. I was just trying to reconcile that.
It is a little confusing.
Yes.
Do we have any other discussion or questions about this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is to schedule a public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance establishing the biennial assessment and equalization of property values of all real estate.
So moved.
Second.
Did you have anything to add for this?
I don't have anything to add, except that staff will provide, if this is approved, we will provide a presentation at the public hearing, which would be scheduled for the second meeting in January.
Fantastic. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to schedule this public hearing. Is there any other discussion on this topic?
This is just to have a public hearing?
It is, just to schedule a public hearing.
At the last meeting, I asked if we could get to figure out how many employees we'd need, and what the budget would be.
Yes, we'll present that at the public hearing. Or we could present it at the first meeting in January, if you would prefer that.
Yeah, I'd rather have it first, so the citizen can see before we move forward.
And I think it's important that we would have it at the meeting immediately before the public hearing, so it would be close in time for people to remember all the things that we present. But we're glad to do that.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and our final item of new business is a proclamation, proclamation, excuse me, for Shop Small Business Saturday, November 29th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think, I think a lot of our localities are celebrating an entire small business week. So while Saturday is designated as that small business Saturday, remember your small businesses all through the holiday season.
Yeah, I think Christiansburg did that. I think Christiansburg brought that up. Councilman Wilson brought that up the other day, so, yeah.
Can we do a week?
Of course we can.
The week at the 29th?
So let's instead, who made the motion, Vicki?
Sorry.
Supervisor Biggs.
Supervisor Biggs, are you willing to amend your motion to make it Shop Small Business Week, starting November 29th? Who made the second?
Ms. Biggs.
Supervisor Biggs.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, so we have now an amended motion that will change the verbiage of this resolution slightly, from Small Business Saturday to Small Business Week, beginning on November 29th. Is that okay, Marty?
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King? Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And moving to reports. Mr. McMahon, what do you have for us today?
I actually have something.
Yay. County attorney report.
Could be old news to some, but a petition was filed for, for a recount of the town of Blacksburg mayor race. That race finished by the losing candidate. The race finished under the 1%, which allowed the losing candidate to file for a recount. And it's also under 5%, which then puts the county on the hook for paying for that recount. So that's, that's going to start, and I'll be working with the general registrar in that process. So, we actually have our first preliminary hearing on Wednesday, and then it'll, it'll go from there. They'll, they'll appoint the court. The court will be made up of the sitting, the head judge here, and our circuit court, plus two other judges will be appointed. And they will hear, you know, and go through the process of the recount and figure out who the winner is, so. I'll keep you updated as it moves on, but.
Great. And just a point of clarification, it's 0.5% that triggers the county having to be responsible, right?
Yeah, correct. I'm sorry, yeah, 0.5, yeah. Half of 1%.
5% is a lot.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. We have county administrators report next. Angie?
Thank you. I do have several things. It's, we have had a lot going on the past two weeks. The FIRE and EMS study consultants were here from November 13th through the 18th, and they met with a lot of different groups, and I think they got some good input. We're going to continue to work with them, and they should have their final report to us in the spring. Then the second item that I have is that I attended the Behavioral Health Docket on November the 13th. And I just want to bring that up because the judges are always so appreciative of the Board of Supervisor's support that allows the Behavioral Health Docket to occur as well as the Recovery Court. So that, they wanted me to pass that along to you. On November the 14th, county staff and I and Chris met with the New River Valley Home Builders Association, the building inspections, planning, GIS, all these departments met with the home builders to just have a time to continue to build relationships and get feedback and input. So that's an important meeting that we hold with them periodically. We appreciate that. I have a few things I'm going to bring up that I know different supervisors attended with me, so I'll just mention them and then defer to you guys to add on to those. I attended the New River Community College inauguration also on November 14th with Supervisor Biggs. That was really a nice event for the new president there. On November the 17th, we had the final open house for Montgomery Matters, and a couple of you were there as well. I think Supervisor Kits will provide more information about this, but the FIRE teen academy graduation, that was, that occurred on the 18th of this month. That was a great partnership between the county and the schools. And the new career and technical education and business partnership administrator, Megan Atkinson, really was instrumental in working with our FIRE and EMS department. Specifically Bradley Hancock was very involved with that. It was a great project that I know we'll hear more about in a few minutes. Then on Wednesday, the 19th, I attended the Leadership NRV Graduate Foundations of Leadership Academy, and that was great, too. We, that's another opportunity for a partnership in the county. The county and both towns send students, participants, to this leadership program twice a year. It helps the people build relationships with their town or county counterparts, and it also helps people throughout the county work together in a different way. And this, this session was for higher-level managers, so there were some department directors and assistant directors and those kinds of folks at that meeting, or that series. Then, I attended with Chair DeMots, the Governor's Housing Award Ceremony. That was also held last week. And then, let's see. That is, that's my list of all the things that we've been doing these past few weeks. But I also wanted to let everyone know that on December the 13th, from 11:00 to 3:00, at the Animal Care and Adoption Center, there will be a Happy Holidays event, open to the public breakfast, or as time was Santa and the animals. So I hope that folks can come out for that, and I wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Thank you. Okay, we did have a couple of supervisors mention that they have specific items that they wanted to discuss. I'm looking first to Supervisor King, and then I'm going to come to Supervisor Ben for your board reports. So, go right ahead Supervisor King.
Thank you, thank you. I don't have no report, but I would like to make a motion for December the 24th, we are giving county staff a half a day off. I would like to put a motion on the floor to go ahead and give them the whole day off. When they come in at 8:30 and leave at 12, I think the employees really deserved a full day.
So Marty, can I take a motion during board reports?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so we have a motion from Supervisor King to make, okay, to make December 24th, I kept on trying to say October, December 24th, a county closed day for employees. And then that has been seconded by Supervisor Kits. Do we have any discussion?
Do we want to make this an annual thing moving forward?
I don't know that we can, because we follow the state holiday guidelines.
Okay.
That's correct. Sometimes we get the full day of Christmas Eve. It just depends on how the calendar falls, how the holiday falls.
Okay, so seeing no discussion, let's take a vote on Christmas Eve off for county employees. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair DeMots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
On behalf of all of the employees, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
And you said you didn't have anything else in your report, right Supervisor King?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Ben, I know you also had something.
I actually have a few things, and considering I haven't had any reports for, you know, for quite a bit, I'm going to take the time and do that. I do want to thank Mr. Brennan for his kind words, if he's still here. That's very kind. My last meeting will be the next meeting, December 15th. And at 6:00 PM, the county will be, what are they doing, Ms. Hill?
We're going to host a reception on your behalf and present the resolution that the board approved for you at that event.
So if anybody wants to attend, you're welcome.
That's right.
I would like to speak to the presentation that was done at the beginning of a public address. I'd like us to double-check their numbers. And the way they did the calculation with inflation and things like that, it never hurts to just keep looking at the same numbers in different ways to see if whatever we call fairness continues to move forward, so. The next item is, the last meeting was right, we were celebrating Veterans Day, and many of us were talking about, well, what else can we do for the veterans? And I was thinking about the ACE program. And I was think, I knew that it wouldn't be part of the ACE program, but maybe there's a way to have something like the ACE program for, that the veterans could partake in at New River Community College. And this ask is, I'm hoping, a thumbs-up ask for the staff to investigate. Maybe they'll reach out to the gentleman that presented. Maybe there'll be a survey that will say, if this was available, how many people would be interested in partaking full-time classes at NRV? I mean, it would possibly mimic the same requirements for the ACE program, but for veterans. I thought that that might be something that would be worth investigating at least. Is a thumbs-up okay for, for this? If anybody has any questions or whatever, yeah.
I know that New River Community College has a veterans coordinator, so we can reach out to him and find out some more about that.
Yeah. I envisioned that it wouldn't take a lot of money, because there's so much money, or I think there's a lot of money available for veterans. And so I think it's, and New River is so good at finding money for the students that go through the ACE program to begin with, that it might not be a huge hit to our budget. Lastly, I want to speak to the intervention that Ms. Majors talked about. I'd like us to ask for the extra 30 days so that the residents in our county will have more time to do the investigation before the presentation, you know, is done, and the hearing, and all that kind of stuff. Does anybody have any concerns about that, or?
So your request is for Montgomery County to file as an intervenor?
Yes.
And my understanding is the deadline to do that is this Wednesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Marty, does that give you enough time if the board wants you to move forward with that?
Yeah, that, there's plenty of time. We can file it tomorrow. The board needs to adopt a resolution to, to vote to authorize the county intervening. And then, just so I understand, the second ask is that to, once we intervene, to then file
For 30 days.
A letter after that, asking for, for to consider. A letter after that, asking for, for, to consider extending the deadline for others to intervene 30 more days, is that correct?
Yes. Can you, can you kind of?
And sorry?
Intervene and comment. We do both, 30 more days for intervention.
Okay, yeah, right.
30 days for intervention and comment.
Thank you, I was doing the same thing. 30 days for intervention and comment.
So I, I'd like to make a motion for that.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So Marty, can you give us some language for what the motion is? So this is a motion to adopt a resolution?
It's a motion authorizing, or the county attorney to file on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, a motion to intervene in the MVP compressor station petition that they filed with FERC. And then also, if that, if that passes, then also ask, or authorize the county attorney to file a letter asking FERC to extend the deadline for others to file as interveners, and provide comment, an additional 30 days, which would put it December. I don't have the exact date, but we can figure it out.
So is that one motion, or is that two separate?
You, you can do it in one motion, yeah.
Okay, so does that work?
Unless someone didn't agree with one part, and they get asked to break it out, but...
So you're, is, is it a 30-day extension, or two 30-days?
No, we, we have to file within two days, so we're going to file, but then Ms. Majors wants citizens to have an additional 30 days in order to file, and so we would be asking them to extend that time. I, I know she's filed a letter asking to extend.
So let me just clarify, you're okay with the motion, as Marty has described, and you're okay with continuing with the second. So is there any other discussion on this topic before we vote on this motion?
Yeah, and, and just, we're just intervening. We're not saying we oppose it or support it. At this point, we're just intervening.
Right.
That don't mean they have to grant it, right?
No, you, no, we have a right to intervene, I think, because it's, it's going on in the county, so, I mean, we'll definitely be allowed to intervene. All that does is allows us, as the process moves forward, to, to, you know, provide comment, or, I mean, I, I think we did that the first time.
Right.
Way, way, way back then. I was much younger then, yeah.
Okay. So seeing no additional discussion, Madam Clerk, do you have what you need to move us forward? Okay, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Great. Okay. Supervisor Bone, was that your finish?
Thank you very much.
Okay, perfect. All right, so moving on with board reports, Supervisor Biggs?
I want, I wanted to say I agree with Supervisor Bone. I'd like to know, on the presentation, like, hopefully you could get a copy of it, but I'm not sure how the assumptions were made, and I would like staff to check the numbers and give us some feedback on that. I think that would be important for everybody to know.
We'll do that. We'll reach out to the people that spoke if we need more information about their assumptions.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll just comment on a few things. So inauguration at New River Community College that Ms. Hill and I were able to go to, it was a very unusual inauguration in that it took two hours, but it was good, because they actually had folks speak that had gone through programs or were students there, so it was actually quite moving. And I think the new president, Dr. Brandon, will do a good job. On November 17th, Vice Chair Fidzikowski and I went to Montgomery Matters, and I just could not believe the work the planning staff did on this open house. I mean, they had it all organized, you know, down on the first level, all the way into multi-purpose room one, and Steve and I spent the whole time putting dots everywhere. We didn't know we were going to do that when we got there, but, but we did do it, and I'm sure Steve will have something to say about it, too. And then I left there, and I went to another strategic planning open house, and that was for the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, because we're finishing up our strategic plan, too. So by the time I got over there, I think they had like maybe over 40 people, most of them from airport acres, that are very interested in that plan. Everything went really well. The neighbors were happy with what they heard, so that was always good. And then on Wednesday, the airport was able to welcome the new Virginia Tech football coach, Coach Franklin. So again, we got to share, to, to show off the airport, so that was good. And then I wanted to bring to your attention, in case you don't know about this, on November 15th, we had the opening of the World War II Museum of the New River Valley, and it's in Blacksburg, in the old Aztec building. This man, this veteran, Joseph Collins, is a one-man show, and he has collected artifacts, and he had the whole museum organized, and you can visit it. I think they're going to have reoccurring displays, but they had a big turnout for the opening, and they were able to have three planes. That was really cool, because they were going around, around Blacksburg from World War II. So if you get a chance, I can't believe what one person, it shows you what one person with a passion, with a dedication can do, and he has done it. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Grafsky?
Thank you. Just to kind of echo some of Supervisor Bone and Biggs's comments there about the report that we heard earlier. In particular, one thing, one note that I took was, it looked, at least at the end, you know, we compared the overall county budget, the overall school budget, breaking out the school's budget by the different component, like the different funding sources, and particularly looking at how much the county's portion of that budget has changed over that period of time. I'd, I'd be interested in, in knowing that. And then the only other thing that I have this evening, I've brought this up before, but there's kind of some development. So the Virginia Disaster Assistance Fund, which was created by the General Assembly, it's $50 million to help support Virginians that were impacted by Hurricane Helene, and then the subsequent ice storms in February. But this is for homeowners, landowners, farmers, businesses, and, and so this is kind of additional, or in addition to the FEMA funds and federal disaster funds that were available. But last week at our Regional Commission meeting, they let us know that they have hired their community resilience coordinator, who's going to help to kind of coordinate all those activities, help with applications, things like that. His name is Patrick Ford. Again, he's a employee of the Regional Commission, and he's there to help folks through that application. And the Regional Commission is our local government group that's, that's helping to facilitate that.
Do you want to give some information about that, Chris?
Yeah, I think just in general, Chief Gary with our FIRE and EMS department is going to reach out to the Regional Commission, because there is an interest to host a public information meeting, just to make it more known and more available. I don't think they have received that many applications. So they want to make sure, you know, to at least help people as much as possible, if they have damage that hasn't been able.
Well, and, and this program, too, I think expands some of the eligibility criteria relative to the initial program, support programs. So, yeah, I think that, yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up again, is just to try to raise awareness for that.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Kits?
So I had the privilege of attending the graduation for the teen, first teen, sorry, I'm going to get this right, Teen First Responder Academy. And just to go over a little bit real quick, they went over, let's see, it was a curriculum of five classes. They went over, it included not, such as topics such as the 911 Center, Emergency Management, Fire Suppression, EMS, Technical Rescue, and certifications in CPR and Stop the Bleed. And then they did an active scenario while we were there, showing the training that they received and things like that. I, I was really impressed, because we talk about, we want to increase volunteerism, we want to make sure that we support the community, and these young men and women were putting themselves out, there's 23, I think, to go through this. And it's not something all their peers did. They stepped up, and I, I wanted to commend them for that, because service is a big thing for me. It's very important, and to see these young men and women take that responsibility seriously was a big deal. So they deserve a big kudos, and it was good to go see them. It was lucky we got a nice day, it was a little cool, but, but, yeah, but I wanted to make sure they got that out there, and I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and to be safe on the road. So that's all, thank you.
Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I don't know if I need a motion for this, but I would like to bring back up, I mentioned it last meeting, about including the data centers in our zoning, in our zoning ordinance.
Maybe a referral resolution to the Planning Commission to define, and I'm stumbling.
I think we would amend the zoning ordinance to include that as a definition.
Or how about, you want to have staff bring that to the next meeting? A motion similar to what the chair just said?
Yeah, that, that would be fine, but I, I don't, I don't think it's something that we want to forget, because it was really emphasized at the VACO conference, because so many counties are dealing with it, so. Yeah, I just, I would like to see it move forward and not be forgotten, so.
All right.
And as far as the comprehensive plan, very meticulous. I got dot finger from putting so many dots on the boards, but hopefully I didn't cancel out all the ones that you put down there, Supervisor Biggs.
We started obsidian.
Yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Okay. And I really just have one item I wanted to talk on, touch on. Angie mentioned attending the Virginia, Virginia Governor's Housing Awards Ceremony. So we attended that along with Bree and Justin and Jennifer Willsey from the Regional Commission. There were a couple of other people there with us as well. I'm not going to spoil it, because I'm going to talk a little bit about it first. So the Virginia Governor's Housing Conference is, it consistently attracts more than 1,100 affordable housing advocate, advocates, providers, and policymakers across Virginia. This year, it was held at the Hotel Roanoke, and so it is a multi-day conference with tons of work sessions, speakers, tons of information for all the attendees who go there. So thankfully, we did have people from the county that were there to attend the entire event. Angie and I went for lunch, because we were celebrating one of our own. So the, at the Housing Awards Luncheon, they gave out a variety of awards. One was for the Best Multi-Family or Rental Housing Development. This award recognizes exceptional multifamily rental housing developments that prioritize innovation in concept and design, while meeting the unique needs of its target population. So it may include new construction, renovation, preservation, or adaptive reuse. And Montgomery County has a project that was all three. And so I was super privileged and just really honored to be invited to attend to watch Taylor Hollow Construction and Joe Fortier receive an award for the Prices Fork School redevelopment. So that project is a adaptive reuse of the old school. It is a renovation of the old school. It's new construction on the back part of the school. It's housing for seniors. It's housing for, or I guess income-based housing for all. So it's just a really, a shining light in our community, but on the statewide stage as well. It has won just tons and tons of awards. This is just one more that they can put as a feather in their cap. So congratulations to Taylor Hollow Construction, to Acme Panel Company, and to Joe Fortier. And seeing nothing else? Oh, Supervisor King, yes.
One more. When you, when y'all checked with the presentation we had this evening? Would you ask them, because you know the schools get a bigger budget than the county? And maybe because we moved ours up for the paid FIRE and EMS is where the percentage is coming from?
Yes.
I mean, you know, we could get a million dollars more if they get 500, it's still going to look like.
Right, I understand what you're saying, and I'll look at that, too, and get the staff to help.
One thing, too. They did have the money for free lunches. They didn't do it.
Okay. Seeing no other business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.